I call to order this regular meeting of the Monument Town Council, March 18th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Cheers.
Where is the music coming from?
We need to be back here.
Ms. Erickson, will you take raw, please?
Councilmember Chronic?
Here.
Councilmember Romanella?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Here.
Councilmember Abbott?
Here.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Present.
Mary La Kind?
Here.
Councilmember Kimple?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, as far as disclosures of conflicts of interest, based on item number 12A, I submitted a disclosure, however, that conflict doesn't exist because we're going to modify 12A. And so I'm going to be rescinding my conflict of interest. Javon, is that sufficient?
Yeah, and just to clarify, so we're not going to be talking about the IC investigation. Yeah, we're not going to be talking about the IC investigation, so that's what the amendment will be. So no need for the conflict disclosure.
Are we just getting rid of 12A completely then?
No.
Oh.
We're going to modify it. Okay, so that said, any, anybody have an issue with the consent agenda? If not, I will make a motion to modify 12A, removing and Independent Ethics Committee. So from after Office of Attorney Regulation Council strike and Independent Ethics Commission?
That a motion?
That's a motion to modify.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to modify the agenda.
Hold on, hold on. Ken's got a question.
Okay.
Is there a way to move number five down to number 12 as well, so we do them all together?
No. There's a reason five is before the resolution. All right, we have a motion and a second for the modification.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, and then we need a motion to approve the agenda as modified.
All right, so move.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passed seven to zero, and we have our first item, which will be oaths of office for Officer Thompson. Chief Regan.
It's my pleasure to introduce you through our new officer, Dustin Thompson.
You need to be in the mic so people can hear you.
It's an awkward place.
Sorry. You can move that around.
I'm over here. No, I'm good. As I was saying, it's my pleasure to introduce our newest officer, Dustin Thompson. He comes to us from Manitou Springs, although he lives locally here in the area. So very fortunate to pick him up, and we're happy to have him here. And if you're ready, I'll swear you in. All right, come on over here. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Dustin Thompson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and bear.
That I will support and bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution and laws.
To the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
And the state of Colorado.
And the state of Colorado.
And to the ordinances of the town of Monument.
And to the ordinances of the town of Monument.
And that I will defend and protect the lives.
And I will defend and protect the lives.
Safety and property.
Safety and property.
Of the people of Monument.
Of the people of Monument.
And that I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
And I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the Office of Peace Officer.
The duties of the Office of Peace Officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Good thing you got that vest on.
Yeah.
Burford's common claim.
Oh, he is.
Yeah, I'm good. Absolutely not. Thank you, sir. Good job.
Okay, next up, we have an executive session. An executive session pursuant to 24-6-4024B of Colorado Vice Statute to receive legal advice from the town attorney on specifically questions regarding legal issues related to land use development standards requirements and exactions. Javon?
Yeah, so.
Go into executive session.
In a second. So for those that are in Town Hall, we are going to ask for you to step outside for a few minutes while we go into this executive session, and we will invite you back in, hopefully in the next five minutes or so. Yeah. Okay. And, yeah, Jim, you want to do the motion?
Sure.
Get my glasses back on. I move I'd enter executive session pursuant to 24-6-4024B CRS to receive legal advice from the town attorney on specific legal questions regarding legal issues related to land use development standards requirements and exactions.
Second.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Council or Mary La Kind? Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Aye.
Okay, so we're back from executive session. My apologies for being completely off on the amount of time it was going to take to get through that. If we're all ready to continue, then we will move on to item 6A, a cost of water delivery presentation. Mr. Tarnish.
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. Presentation to have for you tonight is rather short, but there's a lot of research that went behind this. Bringing it in front of you tonight. The presentation's on the cost of water delivery for our customers. And what I like to start out with is to know what our what our cost to produce the water is. And getting into the first page here. Well, we've calculated it out for 2023. Right now, as of last year, it costs $10.49 to produce 1,000 gallons of water. That is higher than some around us, and it is less than others. Every year, that number changes depending on the production that we produce and amount of cost based on power and chemical and repairs that we might have to do to maintain things. What I did not include in this price, which I didn't think it really has as much bearing on actual cost, is the CLP bond projects that were completed in 2023. At some point, things like the tank, the cost to maintain the tank, might be built into that, but that'll probably start in 2024. Other interesting things that are related to this is 90% of our water service is supplied by residential three-quarter inch size meters. So 90% of our water we produce goes to our residents under that sizing, which is the majority of our customers. And also thing we calculated out was the cost of delivery for this for this last year was $100.55. Now, there were some months when it was on a $50 range, $60 range, depending on wintertime, summertime. But in the summer, for about three months, the average was above that amount. So when you calculate it out, again, that's just for all of last year. The average was $100.55. Those are the slides I prepared. I didn't want to put too much into this with tons of data that, like I said, that were calculated for this. But I'll just point out a couple of things related to that. Our average customer last year used an app for this for the whole year now, used 4,741 gallons per month. Yeah, went back five years, and that amount there is the lowest amount in the last five years. 2022, we were slightly higher, like 4765. Our peak was in 2020, when we were at 6,200. A lot of that can be contributed to conservation measures. A lot of it can be trimmed to the meter reading system we have, which is a one, what they call One Water, your smart meters. When people access that, you can see every gallon of water at any given time of the day. A lot of times, residents will see that their water usage has gone up, and they'll call the office here, and they'll send an operator to make sure that thing's okay. And on a rare occasion, we find an issue, and we either correct it, if it's our responsibility, or we give them suggestions about calling a plumber, if it's a pressure reducing valve, so on and so forth. So that's kind of where we're at with our costs to provide this water to our customers. The only other thing that really I'm not in a position to answer right now would be what's going to happen in the future when the board gives direction as far as northern delivery of the Loop project. Those costs will be assessed once we know the details of what's involved in that. Right now, NDS has provided some numbers, and the Loop Project's provided some numbers. But until we actually have a direction on that, then we can do some adjustments and figure out where, what's going to happen in the future. So any questions you have on this?
Yeah, so that was the whole point of this exercise, right? Figure out what we're charging our own customers, which is 1049 per thousand. We've got numbers from NDS and the Loop, which I think in some cases were almost double, right, close to $16, $17 per 1,000.
I thought it was like $835.
Almost cheaper?
Yeah. But isn't this 1049, that's the cost to deliver, or that's the cost to the customer?
The town. It's what that costs the town to produce 1,000 gallons.
Okay, so that's not what's on the bill.
Well, the bill is on the last slide. The average water bill in 2023 was $100.55. What's missing is how many gallons they were, so you could do the math.
4,100.
You already said 4,600 or?
4,100.
Right. 41.
And again, keep in mind that the water usage there, again, that's based on the actual flow to the meters, but there are other costs involved in a typical water bill. If someone's late, for example, there's a $12.50 charge. If they were in a shut-off notice, then there's a $20 charge for us to go out and hang a door hanger and remind them that they need a call. All we ask of our of our customers is to make contact in their water billing office so that they can make arrangements. We're not in the business to shut people off just because we can't. We have procedures in place that monitor that. And it's been pretty successful. And I didn't check this last year, but I remember back when I was doing the actual billing portion of the job. We had about 10% of our customers that were like routinely getting that late charge. So if you have, for example, 1,400 customers, roughly 140 of them end up with a late charge at some point in time. But most of them are repeat offenders. It's not like we get a new group. It's the same group that called, and sorry, I forgot to pay, and so on and so forth. So.
Those aren't, do we offer a program for people who have difficulties paying?
Trauma occurs this.
Try, yes, we don't, as a municipality, have a program.
We, I think we tried that a couple of years ago, and nobody donated to it.
Oh.
Yeah, it was a donation.
The dollar or whatever.
It was a roundup program. Tom, explain to them the conversations that you had with Jim McGrady recently.
Yeah, I had a conversation recently with him. The NDS costs that were given to us in a separate meeting. And there are a lot of details that I've learned after the fact. What the actual cost would be. There's, there's there's an upfront charge, which is a large number, which is basically the capital investment. Then there's an annual charge that goes for O and M. And then there's the rate for the actual water that you receive, depending whether you're taking your own return flows back, or you're taking excess water from TriView. So if you total that all up, it's, it's a little more than we initially were thinking when we got into this. But I think I think if we're going to get into the details of that, we probably need a separate meeting, not all that needs to be in executive session. Not because of
Most likely.
Data that's unique to their system.
Okay, well, I am not going to speak for the rest of the council, but I think we're all wanting to get past this. This is going on for me and Councilmember Romanella four years. And I think if we're going to pick, pick a side, I want to do it sooner than later. So if everybody's good.
I just want, I just want real data personally.
Yeah, right, real data.
I don't want to make a decision on something we don't have data personally.
I'm not adverse to that. It, it's just that it seems that right now the Loop is still developing the data to give the Loop the hard data. The NDS, they're doing the test on the pump house this month, if they haven't done so already. And they're going to start pumping end of, I want to say, either June or July. So they're going to have hard numbers probably by the end of the year. So.
But hard numbers based on what? Because?
Based on activity.
Activity, but who's setting the rates?
We will not, Colorado Springs Utility sets the rate.
That's my point.
Yep.
Plus, there's the delivery fee from TriView to us. And if I'm not mistaken.
So if.
There's a rate they're going to charge us.
If we don't buy into NDS, correct? If we buy into NDS, then we become owner, part owners of the NDS.
Okay, but there's also the fact that they can't match the capacity.
They can. We.
Without.
TriView built the pipes.
So what they presented to us was, I believe, Tom, correct me, was it 400 gallons of 400 gallons minute, or what was, what was the number they gave us? Acre. It was about, yeah, 400 acre. But it was short, and it doesn't service all of Monument. Right. Especially Village Center. The, the numbers that the Loop gave were for the entire town of Monument. Right, but Village Center would not be part of that. No.
No.
Village Center's not part of either one of them.
The, the.
That's, that's leading to, because when you say the northern delivery northern delivery system for the entire town of Monument, as compared to the Loop, which is only the, which would service the west side.
Only.
Only of Monument, because TriView still owns two-thirds of the water being delivered.
Yeah, but they're only delivering us water for the west side. They're not delivering us water. We're not sharing their cost on, on delivering to the east side. And they won't deliver to Village Center.
Only.
No, because Village Center is in Woodmore's water service area.
But if.
Not only, not only Village Center, let's make sure that everybody understands it. And my job. Everything south, I mean, everything north of Higbee Road. Right. Is Woodmore.
Yeah.
Okay.
And so, but here's the so when, when we, and I say we, because this, so now I'm putting myself, when I was in the, on TriView Board, we specifically built the NDS to service Forest Lakes and Town of Monument. We were going to go with Woodmore. That's why we were going to look at 24-inch pipes. But Woodmore begged out because they're part of it, they're in Division One water area or water area. And so they had, they couldn't, we, it was a bridge too far. So we looked at a 16-inch pipe, which is what's in the ground underneath Roller Coaster Drive right now. And the 16-inch pipe is more than enough to service Forest Lakes, Monument, West Side, and Donala.
But, but just to, because I'm going to disagree with you, because Jim McGrady stood right there, and I asked him that question, and he said it was roughly, I don't know if it was as low as 50%, but it was quite a bit less than, than, because I said, can we get full renewable water on the west side? Not that we necessarily will need it, but can we get it? And he said no.
I remember that, too.
It, the NDS is not providing full renewable to town, to TriView either. It's at the 90% because we, TriView still is going to have to operate the wells on a rotating basis, because you're still going to have to operate the wells. Or you can spend a boatload of millions of dollars to shut down the wells, right?
Our, um, and I'm just asking, because we do need to have this dialogue.
Yes.
But this was a presentation from Tom. We didn't have a debate between the NDS and the Loop here. And I think if we do do that, we should have the parties here to directly ask questions of and just hammer this out.
I'm in violation.
That's a good, that's a good point.
Yes.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you letting us know those, those numbers. And if there's additional data that we would like, we can just email it to you and.
Right.
And send it out.
Exactly.
Perfect. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
Okay. Next up, ordinance number 072024, ordinance amending the Monument Municipal Code titles 2, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 18 concerning town code enforcement matters. Javon?
Yep, so we went ahead and drafted a ordinance that kind of deals with some of your code enforcement issues. So I know that Bob and Bart worked pretty closely on that, but so I'm going to turn it to the chief first, because I think he's got some comments on kind of the overall background. Then I'll get to the actual ordinance.
Come on down, chief.
Thanks for having me. You want me to write my name down?
Yeah.
Patrick Regan, Chief of Police for the Town of Monument. As you know, last summer, we were dealing with some constraints we had with our town code on enforcing code enforcement violations. Since that time, we've been working with Bob and Bart to not only strengthen the code, but kind of hit all the points that we talked about maybe six months ago, that it needed to be a lot clearer. It needed to define who could issue citations for violations. We needed to define what the instrument was to say, am I giving you a ticket? Am I giving you a referral? So we did all that. We outlined a fine structure, too. I'm sure you've all read it, and I apologize for the 23-plus pages, but they did a great job. They, they pretty much hit every point we asked them to cover. So I know Javon's going to go through the, the legal aspect of it, but this is what we're talking about. I appreciate your patience. It's been a long process, but like we all, we all talked about, we wanted to do it one time. And I think Bob and his crew did a great job with that. Thank you.
All right. I don't know if anybody's got questions. I have one question related to, and I asked it of Bob, and I didn't get a response back yet, but is there a section? Because I looked at the, the fee structure and what sections they were tied to, but specifically, if somebody were to set up an RV on their property and convert it into a working unit plumbing, electricity, and basically it's an ADU, or their she shed and make it an ADU, or they decided to show up to the town's parks and pop a tent and decide they were going to live there. What sections address unauthorized dwelling units? And, and are the, are there fees tied to it?
Yes, I'd have to look more specifically to give you an answer, but I can get that back to you.
So we're not sure if, because I see, you know, weed violations and there's zoning and development standards that sort of probably falls in line with living in places they're not supposed to.
Right.
But I just want to make sure that there's confirmation that if somebody decides, because we had an issue is it a year ago, in the downtown area where somebody had their RV operating, and there was complaints made about it. And I don't remember what the action that was taken, but.
They had it removed.
They had it, yeah. So I just want to make sure that we've got those kind of situations.
I was actually removed from the property.
You removed it?
By two. I was removed.
You, oh, you, with you?
They were protecting me. Too often.
No, but to your point that I don't think any of us were under the misconception that we were going to get everything in this. So if there are things that we need to add, we have a great framework to start with. And if we do see those one-offs that we need to address, we're certainly ready to do that.
Yep. Okay, excellent. This is a public hearing. Oh, any other questions from the council for chief or Javon?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, this is a public hearing item. If there's anybody who is in Town Hall that would like to speak for or against this ordinance, please come forward. If there's anybody online, please raise your hand, so you can be called on.
See no hindrance here.
Okay, and there's nobody in house, so we will close the public hearing item and bring it back to the council for further discussion or a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, adopt ordinance number 072024, an ordinance amending the Monument Municipal Code titles 2, 8, 9, 10, 12, and 18 concerning town code enforcement matters.
Exactly. Motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
Mayor Pro Tem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
In favor.
Yep.
That motion passes seven to zero. All right, next up, resolution, this is coming back again. 042024, resolution approving a final plat for Zil at Jackson Creek. As the council has not yet, this is not in the packet, so I, I am guessing since we have not yet finalized our road concerns and whatnot from Higbee, we need to get that on an agenda so we can discuss it and have the, the decision made. This, I will make a motion that this will be continued until can we get this on the next agenda and, and the discussion of Higbee Road?
We can, if you want it that soon.
Is there a reason to delay it?
No, there's not. Don't we have to figure out the roads first?
That's what I'm talking about. We do the road first.
Oh, and then do this after.
Well, this is going to get continued. There, if we do anything to the road that causes them to have to modify their final plat, it's going to get continued again. I just want to make sure that it's on the radar so that we get the road done quickly so that we can give notice to the developer if anything that they have to do is required based on our decision of the road.
So with that comment, then let's say that for argument's sake, we get a final layout for Higbee April 15, X, whatever, April 15, and it changes it. The developer gets 30 days, 60 days to make adjustments, or like, should, should we just continue it to, what, June 1st, or?
Yeah, typically, well, when we get a design in, it would be 30 days for us to review. And then we'll give comments back to them, and they'd have 30 days to, to respond to those comments.
So do we, do we want to bake in? So do we, do we want to bake in that extra 30 days to give the developer time to res, essentially respond to the Higbee Road layout on the assumption that there will be changes? If there isn't, then we can bring it forward, right?
Yeah, I think when, when you make your decision and you provide direction, uh, I think you could ask the applicant at that time how much time they need to make the adjustments that you're requesting.
All right, I would, I would like us to have the road on the April 1st agenda. And that, that gives us time to finalize what our direction is, and then if we have to vote on something related to it, it would be on the 15th.
Okay.
And then, so I would move, I would move to, um, continue this resolution to April 15th.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to continue, resolution 04, 2024 to April 15th.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
All right, that motion passes seven to zero. Next up is Resolution 20, 2024, Resolution approving a contract with Envision IT Solutions for Managed Service Provider Services. Welcome to the party, Will. You're up.
Hi, good, good evening. Um, you saw the memorandum. Uh, we've got an opportunity to take our managed service provider support to the next level. Um, my, uh, my assessment over the last seven months, uh, our current managed service provider um, has, we, we've kind of outgrown them, and some of their experience had left, and we needed to go and, and, uh, find some, a, a company that could provide us with, with a good solution that's gonna be a good partner. And, uh, we went through committee, and based on the memorandum, we identified Envision IT solutions, um, as, as our, uh, as our town choice by committee. And, uh, I've got Kevin Gray, uh, from Envision IT Solutions here with us this evening. Um, I'd like to introduce him. If you've got any questions based on the package, um, that I can specifically answer. Um, the lawyers did take a look at it, and, uh, and, uh, um, uh, Mr. Quarles provided back, um, some, some feedback that doesn't prevent us from, uh, um, uh, taking it to a vote this evening. Um, but if you'd like, uh, uh, Mr. Gray to come up and introduce himself. If you've got any questions for me or him, I'd be glad to answer them at this time.
I, I just have one question that's quick for you. So what, what's the current, what's the current cost that we're spending?
Current cost is, is, is about $2,000 more a month than what, uh, than what we, uh, uh, when, when we put this out for bid that, that we've got.
So this.
But in all, it's basically $125 per the number of employees that provides us with overall arching services. So if we, you know, all of a sudden decide to hire eight more people, then it would go, it would go up based on that $125 per, um, per user.
But currently, you're saying it, it would be this.
It's actually less.
Go down.
Yes, it is gonna be.
Okay. That's my only question.
Um, I've got a question on certifications related to town water operations and police requirements. Um, does this client currently meet the certification requirements, or they'd have to get certified?
Nope, uh, Envision IT Solutions is already CGIS qualified. Um, they have multiple, uh, municipalities, um, mainly in New Mexico, northern New Mexico area. Um, and that's all, they all require CGIS compliance. Um, I don't know if you'd like, uh, Kevin to come in and talk a little bit more about it.
Um, just so they're CGIS certified?
They, yes, they are already CGIS certified.
Um, wagon wheel? Just kidding.
How many, what was your? They also manage police departments, so they're very familiar with police departments already. And they also manage water departments, and that's one of the, one, one of the things that really took them over compared to the other candidates that we saw. They were the only candidates that were already CGIS qualified, already had experience with municipalities for, for multiple years. So that really provided them basically, uh, a, a no-brainer decision. Uh, but the, there, the experience that we saw, and when we interviewed them, they were far superior than the, the majority of the, uh, candidates that we interviewed.
How many did you interview?
We interviewed three, but we actually had 19 submissions, so.
Have you warned him that there are two people up here that have worked for massive MSPs in the past?
I did not, did not warn him.
Oh.
Wanted to keep that quiet.
Okay.
Oh, you Google, huh?
Nice.
Nice.
You know, I've been getting all these strange LinkedIn. Someone's viewed your profile. Someone's viewed your profile.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's fine. Um, I am looking forward to, at some point, single sign-on password reset by the end user being implemented at some point. We're waiting four years.
Is that like a subtle hint, or like?
I, I, it's as subtle as I can make it. Any other questions, uh, for the, um, MSP, uh, or Will?
Would you like, uh, Kevin to come up and introduce himself?
Well, yeah, yeah, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kevin Gray, the managing partner with Envision Solutions. We've been in business for 17 years. Moved up, expanded our business up into Colorado three years ago, but from Albuquerque. Um, we're kind of a division of a bigger company that's been in business for 65 years. So we have a, a great history. Uh, like I said, one of our longest clients is, we've been with municipalities for over 15 years. Um, so we know the, the ins and outs, and the budgetary things, and council meetings, and all the fun stuff that goes along with it, but it's definitely, uh, a niche that we fall into greatly, so love to answer any questions.
What other areas in Colorado are in service?
What other areas? Uh, we, um, engineering, architect, and legal are the other areas that are, are primary, but we also have nonprofits, um, other businesses, but our main focus is municipalities, the A and E market, and legal.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to finish up by adding is, is one of the things they're bringing that right now, um, that, that I see is that they have the manning at the call center that, uh, right now is, is kind of lacking with our current MSP. And I really think that that's gonna turn around, and we've already been talking about, uh, if it passes tonight, um, some, um, education-type, uh, marketing plans to get everybody on board. So, because to me, IT is a team thing. And whether you, whether you're somebody using the device, or whether you're somebody that's supporting it, you're all on one team. If you're educated, then you can help the team be successful, so, thank you.
I was gonna have a witty retort on the education of our town manager when it comes to IT, but I'm.
Break.
Um, okay, uh, if there's no other questions for Will or, uh, represented from Envision IT, then I will look for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Um, um, to approve Resolution Number 20-2024, a resolution approving a contract with Envision IT Solutions for Managed Service Provider Services.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. What? Okay, Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Indeed.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero. Welcome, Envision IT. Next up, Resolution 21, 2024, Resolution for the Town Council to Approve Water Service Supply Outside Our Current Water Service Boundary. Mr. Tharnish?
Good evening once again, Mayor and Council. Resolution in front of you at this time is to approve a water service supply outside of our current water service boundary. Uh, Mr. John Clark, who is present in case questions come up, is here. Uh, he was approached, or he approached the town about the possibility of tying into one of our existing water mains. Due to his well that he currently operates on is showing deteriorating conditions, and there's a lot of concerns about water quality coming from that. The property in question here is located right on our northern border. It's right next to our northernmost, uh, connection. So it would not be very difficult to tie into our system. We have a eight and a 12-inch water main that are right on his side of the road. And, um, he is currently in the county, that's why it's considered outside. And I'll be happy to take any questions. Have them.
Um, the first question is, it's, it's you, right? You're the, who's gentleman? Okay, because you look familiar. He doesn't. I don't remember. Um, was this the property that was on NBC News about their water, water issues over there?
Uh, I don't believe so.
Okay.
No.
All right. Uh, what, there was one that hit the news, and it had to do with a, a RV park that had radium and the.
Was it a mobile home park?
Yeah, mobile home park or something.
Yes, there, there's one of those going towards Palmer Lake that's in a lot of trouble with.
Right, that's what I was thinking of. This is not the same property. Perfect, okay. Um, I, I don't personally have any questions, or, uh, Mr. King has questions.
Go ahead.
Oh. You go, you first.
Okay, so my question on this property, because, um, typically, when, when, like, when a property gets annexed into town, and I know this was here before, it's once before, um, the water rights would go away to get hooked up to the service. And, um, what happens if this property gets developed in the future with, um, us hooked up to this tap currently?
Well, depending on the size of water tap that he eventually will request, will determine how much, uh, capacity he would have to serve if he put another building on his property. I think in his letter, he said he had no plans at this time to add anything. Um, as far as the water rights go, again, you mentioned it earlier, those are normally associated with an annexation.
Right.
And normally the rights are turned over, um, the aquifers basically by deed. Special warranty deeds are issued for all three of the aquifers, but since it's not an annexation, it's just a service outside of our system, very similar to what the Palmer Lake Mobile Home Ranch did, uh, late last year.
Right.
When we came for that. They didn't, they still operate their well, or they shut it down. It's kind of, it's kind of up to them, I guess it's they most likely shut it down because that's why they came to us with high radium in their system, and they were, they in particular were under a state compliance order.
Right. So I, yeah, so I guess what my real question is, is it, it's dependent right now upon the tap size as to what it would serve?
Yes.
And if that property got further developed in the future, and it exceeded that, that would be something that would have to come back to ask for additional capacity and/or annex it into the town or something different.
Something, something exactly like.
For one specific purpose right now.
This is supplying the property as it's currently, um, built out, or built, what's there.
Okay.
And, uh, I don't believe, the only thing we've talked about with him is either a three-quarter inch or a one-inch tap, depending on what he wants to do. And the tap fees are associated based on size, and then the actual water rates is where it would be at one and a half times for that, uh, particular cut, the account.
All right.
And this is, this is in, this is in county, or?
Yes.
Is it contiguous?
It is on the south side.
But is it contiguous to our town line?
On the south side.
Is there any reason why we, you don't want to annex it?
Well, I'm sure there's a story that goes with that. He explained a little bit in a letter, but if you want him to come up and talk, he can.
Yeah, I mean, if we're connecting, it would save him money if, from a rate perspective, he was annexed, and, uh, property taxes aside, I'm just curious.
Well, I don't know if you recall, I was attempting to annex last year. And the purpose at that time was, I was trying, my company was, had, was using part of the property, and our main corporate office down in Colorado Springs, the Colorado Springs Utilities had condemned that whole site for one of their big developments there. So we had to hurry around to find another place, and I had this property here that I was wanting to build the office base on. I ran out of time, basically, with no, and I know the town was going through a difficult time at that time, but it went through a whole year of delay because no panel planning directors and everything else, and we don't want to go into all that again, but I ran out of time. So that's why, main, one of the main reasons I pulled the annexation at that time. Right now, I have no plans for any new development or anything else. And of course, you know, an annexation is a lot of money. You know, there's a lot of fees that go along with that. If I'm not planning to develop, I didn't want to spend a bunch of fees and then have it sit there. Because it, basically, it's two parts of the property. There, the area that we've got a warehouse and an office is on the upper part, and they've got the whole bottom part that's vacant. And this is only gonna feed that upper part, the existing buildings, like a three-quarter. I may need a one-inch. I'm not sure, uh, we haven't finalized the actual sizes yet, because I didn't want to get too deep into the engineering until we knew if we had the opportunity to do this. Um, but it's just to feed what's existing. If we develop the lower part, we'd have to get another tap at that time. And then at that time, whether we'd be annexing or whatever we'd be doing, I haven't, I have no idea what we'd be doing at that time.
Okay, thanks for the reminder.
Yeah.
Of what happened a year ago.
Yeah, I'm sure you want to keep reminding, remembering that. So, and that's why I'm not annexing the short answer.
Who, who would bear the costs of the, the tie-in? Are, are you gonna?
He does.
Okay.
All taught. It's, it's not gonna be cheap.
There's a, there's a, there's a tap.
Something I'm looking forward to, but my well, I can show you pictures of our fixtures, and it's not because we're not clean people.
And you're, you're like eight, you're like 800 feet or something there? Is that what the well is? 800?
815 feet, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, because we're drilling like 1,400 now.
Yeah, yeah, and I'd have to kind of re-drill it again and do, I mean, that would be costly, too, and, and then I know that's not a long-term fix, because eventually I'm gonna have to be on water, so figured I'd get on water now.
Are you, are you planning on, um, sealing the well, or what's the plan with the well?
I don't have any plans for that, doing that right now. And what we'll be doing is just coming in and connecting right where the well now goes and feeds the buildings, we just disconnect that and just connect into that existing thing. So the well would just kind of be sitting there, but.
Or the well would cap.
I haven't even thought that far. I, I have no use for the well. You know, I don't want to cap it in case I need some other little use of, of watering things or something like that, but on the other hand, I, it's not good water to use domestically, so I might just know I need to focus on getting the domestic water to the building, so they have, you know, something I feel comfortable with.
Okay, uh, any other questions for Mr. Tharnish or the applicant? If not, um,
Thank you.
The question would be, do we want to provide him water or not?
I would approve Resolution 20.
Um, we have plenty of water to service this, to expand the pipe and provide?
Yes, the, the impact from one additional impact is pretty, pretty negligible. I mean, he'll, I would imagine will use less water than the average residential house, only because there's minimal staff there, and it's just a place of business with a bathroom and then probably some sinks. And that's about it. There's no, uh, at least, I remember conversations, there's no large-scale landscaping that requires irrigation or nothing like that. So the impact would be minimal, yes.
But what happens to the water that's in the existing well? Does it just sit there?
It just sits there until the well is either abandoned or treated and used from some other source. If it was an, if it was an annexation, then, then we would probably abandon the well and take control of the aquifers below the property. But since it's not an annexation, we're pretty limited on on what we would have, anything or any authority with that well, because it's on his private property.
Sure.
But the bottom line is, is that he's gonna pay the town for a tap fee, and he's gonna pay one and a half times our normal delivery rate. So what he does with the well, I mean.
Sure.
That's his business.
And if that ever did get annexed into the town, the rate would go to a normal rate, correct?
Yes, then he would pay the same rates as everybody in town.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 21, 2024, Resolution for the Town Council to Approve Water Service Supply Outside Our Current Water Service Boundary.
Second.
A motion and a second, Ms. Erickson?
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Mayor Protem King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimple?
Yes.
Mary Lekine?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Aye.
Thank you.
You know, any more ayes, and you're gonna be joining the Navy. You know, any more ayes and you're going to be joining the Navy instead of the Air Force.
Aye, aye, sir.
He's in the space department.
Yeah, Space Department. Public comments for items not on the agenda. Individuals attending in person may raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment. Individuals attending via Teams may raise their hand digitally to comment via connected devices. Please lower your hand when finished with your comments. Comments are limited to three minutes. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comment, Haley? Come on down.
Good evening, council members. Haley Chapin from TriLakes Cares, sorry, I did not last on the last meeting. That's really when the public comment of thank you for your support should have been after the approval of the consent agenda. So I would just wanted to reiterate our thanks for the continued support of, through the town of supporting our residents through the work that we do. So we very much appreciate that partnership. Also wanted to let you know that a reminder Taste of TriLakes Cares will be on May 15th. Portia will be organizing a table, so hopefully we will see many of you there. That's our signature fundraising event. It will be up at Spruce Mountain Lodge this time. And similar to the Food Network Show Chopped, we challenge local restaurants to create something using the items from our food pantry. It's quite the interesting experience. So we hope to be able to see you on that. Also to let you, May 15th.
And, and just to remind council, that went out today from Portia. And if we could get a response as soon as possible, because we may need two tables and we want to make sure that we get the best two tables out there.
I don't have anything from Portia today.
Well, she emailed me to taste, to confirm.
Okay, so.
Taste of TriLakes Cares. So I'm not sure if she emailed all of you.
It should come, if it hasn't gone out today, it'll go out tomorrow.
I would.
It's in the works.
Not done it, I highly recommend it is a blast of a good time to watch all the area restaurants scramble to figure out how they're going to make food from the pantry. It's, it's a lot of fun.
Yes.
Excuse me, you're eating that way too early. It's executive session popcorn.
Wanted to also mention that um, you'll be missing my public comment for a little while, hopefully, because I will be disappearing for a little bit in the middle of May, right after Taste of TLC. I'll be on sabbatical, so I am not allowed to do anything related TLC. So since sometimes I'm here representing TLC, um, I will not be here. So um, I'll be gone for three, uh, three months uninterrupted away from work in total four, so. Yeah. The Colorado Health Foundation gets all the credit. They are paying for the entire experience and then some. And so I will be disappearing for a little while and then I'll come back and learn about all the things that are going on. But I had to make sure I was there for Taste of TLC. That's our 40th anniversary celebration. So miss me.
Just when we get one of those, when do we get a sabbatical?
And then the last thing was um, presenting the town with our annual certificate of appreciation. Again, just appreciating the partnership that we have in many different ways. Whether it's using conference room space or um, reaching out when we have some sort of a need in the community or helping us with connections in the community to different businesses or developers that might help us satisfy some of the needs and requests that we have. So just wanted to say thank you and um, maybe you hold it here. And I'll take a quick picture that way with you guys in the background.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one remote person.
Okay.
Mister David Brewer.
Bring him up.
Mister Brewer, I have allowed your mic, you'll have to unmute on your side.
Hello, good evening, council, can you hear me okay?
Uh, please hold on one second while we have the volume raised up on our speakers because we cannot hear you.
Good evening, council, can you hear me okay?
Little louder, Will.
Yeah, good evening, council, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Well, I'll try to respect my speaking time to just a couple of minutes. I guess I have a question for the town council and I know this sounds kind of cheesy, but I'm really hoping you can help me as an individual of El Paso County reach my American dream. You can do that by helping me maybe plan with the town manager uh, and meet with Ray, the only planner left in the planning department for a simple minor subdivision application. Uh, you can help me reach my American dream. My wife and I, we just bought a duplex in Monument and it's zoned RA. Um, so I'd like to split that into two smaller parcels. It's about a 1,200 square foot lot. Uh, I'd like to bring it down to two 6,000 square foot lots. So we're talking a quarter size of a football field, uh, creating two lots out of a quarter size of a football field. And man, I can probably bring your county 5,000 extra dollars in property tax. I'm not going to pretend to know where that money goes, but uh, I've already got both sides of the current duplex rented out to some really nice families. So I'm increasing your density. And I just don't know how long your memorandum on pre-applications is going to last. I think I'm only going to need one or two hours of Ray's time and of your town manager's time. And I was wondering if the council could help vote to help me get a pre-app meeting would be my request tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well, are there any other people with their hands up?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to council authorization items, Arbor Day proclamation. Madeline.
Uh, good evening, council. This is just a request to add our annual Arbor Day proclamation to the April 15th Town Council meeting. Thank you.
Okay. All right, um, next up is council comments. Any, um, any members of the council have any comments they would like to make?
I have two.
Okay. Oh, boy.
I have 26.
My, my first one is thank you for listening because the resolutions all had NTEs in them. Not to exceed amounts makes me very happy. The second thing is I attended a recent active shooter uh, presentation from Corporal Marks and Officer Fisher. Wow, is all I can say. But it also made me think, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, Mister Kimple was there, Councilman Kimple and his wife were both there, yes. But it, it made me start to think about sitting here today. What would happen if? Okay, um, I would love to have some kind of a presentation by them or by, you know, um, chief or anyone. What hap, what were to hap, what would happen if here? This is, all of a sudden I just got this oops. But the presentation was phenomenal and um, I, I'd love to see it given to council and some kind of a resolution, not resolution, resolution, but a mechanism for getting out of here in the event something were to happen.
Chief, could we do that in a work session prior to the council meeting?
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we.
Hide behind Councilmember Romanella.
Well, well, I was gonna, I, I was going to mention the fact that she probably need to hide behind you.
We would, we would start with what you would plan to do. I want to hear what you would plan to do and then we'll change it.
It's really good, this is all bulletproof.
So could I get some direction from council on when you would like to have that done? Because that would be, it sounds like we could do that pretty simply.
Um, yeah, why don't we?
How, how long do you need or want or?
How long was the session with, at the chamber?
Was it an hour and a half? And, but?
I went to one of those too, it's great.
So the only thing I would ask is let me get with my instructors, just get a timeline for it. Can I come back at the next meeting with the date? There you go.
Present that.
That'd be great. That's awesome.
Sounds good. She, she said it, the, the nod to exceeds.
First wombs, thank you for the NTE.
Oh, okay, I have a comment on follow yours. I will say that I think Steve and I went to the class last year, didn't we?
Right.
And it was excellent, I was here. But I'm not sure if we had, because that crossed my mind too. I was, it was a very tentative time with the exit of the last, made me paranoid. But I will say having the police presence here makes me feel like there's no, nothing. I don't think anything could get past.
And of course she's talking about you, not me.
Hint, hint. No, I mean, there's usually you and others and I feel far safer than, than I would have prior. And I feel like we've hired more. And so to me, it's not as a concern, but it did cross my mind too, so I, I know what you're.
Okay, um, did you have a comment?
I, I have one in 69 parts. I, I only have three. Okay, I'll start with uh, an art sites update. So we've done the, the voting. The, the original meeting got delayed. Uh, apparently there was a lot of snow. So however, something that came out of um, the, this latest round of voting, and I apologize to Madeline and to Mike. I wanted to send an email to both of you to bring this up. Um, a few of the artists submitted um, small, smaller art, um, what you call it, um, pieces, thank you. And um, Cassie made mention that maybe we want to have indoor displays. Um, I don't know what they cost. But we started talking back and forth and we thought it would be great if for next year, not this year, because this year we, we only did for outdoor. But maybe for next year, um, have indoor displays for here, the foyer in the, in the um, in the town um, municipal area. But then I started thinking, maybe we can also have them at TriLakes Cares, at the Chamber of Commerce, um, at Monument Fire, where Monument Fire has its headquarters. We can discuss it, but I, I think there's opportunities for essentially indoor showing. Yeah, like little trophy cases, what have you. So I wanted to pose it to the council to see if there was interest in adding it to the budget for next year. I don't know, again, I don't know what they cost, so. And, and I apologize, I wanted to send you an email and then life happened. Yep. So that you would, I didn't.
We can definitely give you a range of costs. I think they're all a little bit different, Madeline.
The stipends for each of the artists are all the same. So this year we're offering a thousand dollars per artist that displays a piece with us.
Okay, and then do you know how much the, if you can find out what the, what the indoor stands would look like, like in terms of height and how big? Because they're obviously not going to be like the outdoor massive concrete pedestals, but smaller pedestals, hopefully they won't be as expensive. Um, and then as a council, we, maybe we can discuss where do we want it beyond the, the foyer here? If TriLakes wants to, wants to host a cup, one or two, I don't know how, how big your foyer is, your area, just to kind of spread the, yeah, Chamber of Commerce, kind of spread the.
Yeah, I think what I was talking about, Madeline, we had discussions about upping the stipend so that we could get better artwork than we've got in the past.
We, correct, we updated it from, from 500, which is what we offered in the past. And this year it's 1,000. So that's what we increased it to, which is more in line to what our surrounding communities offer.
And, and I will say, because we, we all voted, so I, I, I don't think I'll, I'll skew the, the results. The art this year, even the, the small, the smaller items were pretty impressive. So we have a meeting Friday at 1,600, uh, sorry, four o'clock, 4:00 PM, military time, sorry. So uh, talk to Cassie or Madeline to, if you want to see the art pieces that were sent out. They were pretty impressive, I thought. So even though there were some, I showed them to my, I voted with my kids and they're like, ooh, that one, ooh, that one. So there, there was a lot of, uh, a lot of um, positive uh, notes on that. Okay, uh, second, um, I showed the briefing of the Uvalde um, lessons learned to my wife, who's on the St. Pete's Student Advisory Council. Mike, I, I let you know this uh, earlier, but just so it's on public record. The St. Pete SAC is, is going to, if not already, uh, is going to contact you, chief, or someone in Monument PD, because they would like to have that briefing presented to the St. Pete's SAC. So uh, there's another kudos for you. Uh, and I know I mentioned it to, to Mike, but I, like I said, I wanted it on public record. Um, and finally, uh, plowing, uh, kudos to Town of Monument and to the plowers out there, uh, as well as Tribe View. I, so quick tangent, I have a plow because I have a runway for a driveway. And I can't, I, I can't describe to you how annoying it is to deal with cars that are parked on the street when you have three feet of, of snow and six feet of drifts. Please be kind to your plowers. If you know that there's snowmageddon coming, if at all possible, please park in your driveway. The last thing you want is for a plow to move your car into the driveway. Just saying. I was able to avoid it. Yeah. Um, I was able to avoid that incident, but um, just, it does not help the plow people to have cars in the streets. Just trust me on that and I'm done.
All right, on that note, I'm going to add to it. A, have we figured out what went on in um, Village Center? And B, did we have anybody since we gave them advanced notice and made a very nice request? Was, were there cars out and did any of our plow drivers have brooms thrown at them?
We're doing an after action this week and we'll be able to get you that information. But I don't think we had to move any vehicles. I wasn't made aware if we were.
I have, I wasn't either and I had no reports of any missiles thrown at vehicles.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to make sure since it happened last time.
Right. We have, nobody's come to me and made any complaints at all.
Okay.
We actually had a lot of um, citizens calling today and giving like appreciation for the plow drivers. Um, we got a lot of calls for other places that it wasn't our jurisdictions and they were complaining about those. But there weren't any complaints on our end.
I will say you know when you're driving into Monument and you know when you're driving into El Paso County. Just saying.
I'll leave it at that. Okay, Mister Kimple?
Yeah, just several things, um, again echoing the uh, appreciation and the thanks for the public works team here in Monument for the snowplow operations. That also includes the police. I know um, on both days, I saw numerous police officers out redirecting traffic to allow the uh, snow team operators to clear specific areas. Um, I know that there is a major issue over there by the pilot with the trucks. Uh, because I had to try to get around some of those so I can get down to the airfield and conduct snow operations there. And I saw the police out there um, working hard. I know along with everyone else that was working in the EOC, um, making the decisions and calls, so great job. I know those were long hours, so I appreciate the, the work and effort. I'm sure a lot of the citizens do as well, so thank you. Second, I want us to make sure that we have on the agenda with the consensus from and direction to staff from the council that there will be a discussion uh, pros and cons about the NDS and the loop. Um, so we can make a determination and then either at the following council or a month after, whatever it's going, you know, some short period of time to actually take a vote so we can uh, move forward after making a decision, what's best for the town. Uh, and we can enter that into our budget matters because we have some major decisions to make, not just about the water delivery system, but how to pay for Jackson Creek Parkway as well. This is going to affect a lot of people in the town of Monument with taxes and potentially other avenues of uh, funding for, for those two major decisions that have to be made. Uh, then lastly, can we also get an answer back to Mister David, who I believe is still online? We, we, I mean, just, just, just give him direction on who he. I mean, just, just to, just to give him direction on who he needs to contact to give him some answers on what's going on.
Well, providing that he left his email address, then I would expect that staff would.
Yeah. Well, I mean, his question is whether or not we're going to raise the moratorium.
Well, now we're not raising the moratorium.
Yeah, I haven't received any direction from council saying that we were.
Right.
And so I think we could answer that now.
We get, we got a March update from you?
No.
So.
No.
Then I would ask, can you give us an update?
Yep. Now?
Yeah.
Okay. Yes, we are in, matter of fact, just talked to Ben, we probably are down to less than twenty cases that we have to finish. And then staff has finished the interviews of the planning director. And we've made a choice and we're doing background checks on them. And so as soon as the background checks are completed, I will announce who that person is.
Do you foresee a potential lifting, partial lifting of the moratorium? Cause we, we had talked about graduated, right? So maybe bringing back pre-application meetings? Did I get that right?
So.
Sometime end of April.
What I told, what I told you in February was that I'd like to get the planning director on. Give them a little bit of time to work with Ben. We're going to keep Ben Thurston's company baseline on. Get them working together to clear the case log completely and then come back to council and receive direction from council.
Based on your update.
Exactly.
So this is, so we would expect another update mid, mid April.
Right. Exactly.
That would give you time for your background check offerings and things of that nature.
We should have that completed this week.
Okay. Thank you.
Offerings are completed.
Okay.
We're just doing background.
Well, except, yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah. Can we make sure we have the water thing in sometime before May?
Last meeting in April. I mean, we got to give them time to prepare to both, both ends because new information from N D S. So, and we are currently, just to let you give you an update, we met with Tribe View and we are currently working on an M O U with them for the emergency interconnect. We met with their attorney. And we are currently working with them on an M O U for the interconnect with Tribe View. And so we should be able to bring that to you probably in May is what I'm hoping because once they have about, I think they said they were going to take about thirty days to, to get it ready and prepared. And then we have to give it to our attorneys to look at and probably another thirty days. So we'll, we'll have a interconnect with Tribe View at that time. I mean, I would say second meeting in May to have this meeting also.
Mr. Kimpel, is that going to be sufficient?
Can we? Can, can we do? Does, this is the emergency connect. What, what Ken is talking about is, is a wa, a water future decision. Can, can we, can we see if Loop and Tribe View are willing to? Do we want to do a work meeting or do we want to do part of the meeting?
I, I, I don't need another presentation. I need them, I need them to be available here to answer questions.
Exactly.
Okay, that, that, yeah.
Discussing.
And, and having them.
Taking them with questions.
Exactly. And then making a decision.
This is no.
Hundred percent.
Yeah, yeah. No presentation. This is us as a council going back and forth. If necessary, throwing popcorn, popcorn at each other, but we, we have discussion as a council, right? And we have the, the experts, Darnish, McGrady and the, the Loop folks here, ready to answer questions if and when we have questions as a council.
Do we want to give Mr. Foreman direction to organize that as quickly as possible, whenever they're both available?
Yes, I, I like that. Either, either April first or April fifteenth.
As soon as possible.
Yep.
So do you want to work study or work session on that?
I'd rather be a work session because then we can free fall, free for all.
Yes.
Yes.
On it instead of it being restricted on, on the agenda.
So like a five o'clock? So give us, give ourselves an hour and a half?
If, it depends on, you know what? That's not going to work because I know, I know right here, we'll not be available for that early.
Yeah.
Unless we.
Well, Jim, is after tax season best then?
Yeah, but, but the, the, yes. And it, but what are we going to do then? Is it going to be, okay. You're going to do this at five o'clock and then what is it going to be on the agenda to actually make a decision on that same meeting later?
I would like that very much. Yes.
Here, here's what I'll, I'll just say with, which I've said like a bunch of times already. We have our water under control for the next year easily. There, I don't think that the Loop system is going to be able to, to give us good numbers. I personally would rather wait until we have reliable data. So we're not just winging it.
So.
I'm one person here. You guys.
However, how long do you wait for one?
I thought they gave us the data last time.
No, we don't have to do it.
The study is not even complete yet.
I'm all for doing it right, but we've told them. If I'm not mistaken, staff has, have clearly told them, we need the information, we need the data.
Right.
Can I?
And they.
But there's a, there's a study that was authorized and Mr. Foreman, how much longer do they need for the study to be complete?
It's issue right now, whether or not we're going to be able to tie into their sanitary sewer line to be able to bring the return flows back. And so once we have that discussion with C S U, we'll know more about what the numbers are because that.
Let me provide some context.
That determines the alignment of where the, where the water line is going to go.
Where do you, when do you see that information being available to you?
It's all depending on C S U getting back to us. We've got questions just like you do.
Okay.
Why don't we take that step? And when you get that information back, we'll have more data and we.
That's why I make some.
That's me. I don't want to keep doing this. Let's just.
Yeah.
I think somebody made the statement just a minute ago, let's do this right. Do it right the first time and not have to go with one of the groups. And then we look up three years from now, two years from now, and the other group has a much more efficient, effective system and we missed out on it.
That's right.
Okay. I'll, I'll give you some context. I went, I, I got on the board of Tribe View in twenty fifteen. In twenty sixteen, the, the board of Tribe View decided to, to move towards a renewable water system. It's coming online this year. I'm not going to do public math, but that's how long it took us, us Tribe View. From a dream to talking to, and that was everything from designing, planning easements, purchasing water, getting agreements. It took us that long. So the, I get your point, Steve, that we're good today. It's not, we, we can't turn around and say, hey, Tom, set it up.
Yep, but you can't.
And he's done in six months. It's going to take several years.
You can connect Northern Delivery System through Canexus in, in a year, no problem. Right, right now you could do that.
It's probably good with the emergency interconnect. That's why I keep bringing that up. Tom, when, when could we have the emergency interconnect? If they have an M O U and our council and their board agree on that, when could we have the emergency interconnect in?
After my talks with Jim McGrady on that, we're probably probably in the fall would be the earliest because it has to go out to bid. There's some question about whether McGrady wanted to build that and then us pay for it. We were going to go to use our process with an R F P to go out for it. So I'm thinking the fall would be the earliest.
So by fall, we will have, and the three wells that we're installing today that the council just approved, the wells, the wellhouses on, when will they be online? Well, mansions.
Yeah, they are, trying to remember the dates, the substantial completion date, I believe is in either August or September.
Right.
I have to look at the documents.
So by fall, we'll have three new wells. We'll have an emergency interconnect with Tribe View. And we think one of our wells, we're probably going to not use that as much as we've done in the past. We're going to, it's offline right now. So we'll have twelve wells that we'll be able to tap into that currently is more than supplies our community today. And we'll have the emergency interconnect with Tribe View.
And I, I, I hear what you're saying. But I'm feeling trapped and backed into a corner. And I don't like it. And that's why I, what I'm saying about let's do it right, because whenever you do something out of desperation, invariably there are unintended consequences that are going to happen. And, and the oopsie ends up, ends up happening. Let's do it right. Let's take our time. There's really no rush to, to Mayor Proton's point.
Okay.
I mean, that's where I'm coming from.
Other comments from the council?
Okay, I have one. I'll try to keep it quick. All right. So I just want to bring to the radar of everyone here. And I know that town staff is working on this now. After the last meeting, when I see that we're so far behind on being able to fund Jackson Creek Parkway and, and no doubt other infrastructure projects because development is happening at a quick pace. There are a lot of communities around here that have traffic impact fees. And El Paso County is one. They're at like thirty-six hundred dollars a unit. These are single family homes. Castle Rock is at eighty-seven hundred dollars a unit. There's several other places that are all around four thousand ish dollars and we're at seven hundred. And all those fees go directly towards roads. And we need to sincerely look at that and raising those fees. Even like in Castle Rock, it's seventeen thousand dollars in fees. Park and Recreation, Fire Department, Police Department, Transportation, Municipal Facilities. And Castle Rock is building like crazy. So it's not like people avoid these areas because of these fees. We just, I, I think it's our duty to not dump this on the, the residents bonds and other increased taxes to pay for development. Development should pay its way. The developers in general, if you look at the stock market, all their stocks are at all time highs. They're making record profits. That's not the issue. And these fees do not increase the price of housing contrary to belief. Market forces are what they are and they'll sell it for the market price that they can get. And if market prices go down low enough that they can't afford to build, then they won't build. That's what a market does. But we need to take care of our residents here and we need to make sure that we can do these roads that are way behind schedule and getting overloaded. And that's my two cents worth on that.
And Mayor Proton, the council's instructed staff to look at those and staff is looking at those now with the intent to bring those results to you and propose changes to our fee structure.
I would like to just add one thing. I, I don't, while we may have to do a study, if it's decided that that's what has to be done. I would like to keep this as close to in-house as possible and not have third parties providing their opinions and, and or public acceptance of what they think our fee should be. Trade groups and things like that.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to let the attorney address that, but it is public meetings.
Well, they could, I, I just, no, I'm just saying, I don't feel like we, we are required to collaborate with them.
No.
And like they have come into, to play for other fees that we've raised.
Right.
There should be a decision based on what the council determines and what you find as being acceptable through the study, but not third parties.
Right. And I think I heard the direction tonight possibly is that if we do a research on this and we find out Castle Rock and, and eight other cities surrounding us have real similar fee structures, then we may not have to do a study. Correct?
Yeah. So basically the idea is like, you just need to have data that's reliable that you've, so like Ben was saying, like it's not necessarily that you need a, a study, but you do need to do your own independent kind of investigation of it and then be able to defend it.
And so the plan is to have Ben and our new planning director complete that and bring that to council.
If, if it's possible, I'd like to see it happen before the moratorium is lifted.
I one hundred percent agree on that.
Great.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? All right. Seeing none, we are going to move.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no other comments, I did want to address your question about the code enforcement.
Okay.
So the R Vs, it's not specifically addressed, but the way that the ordinance works, it's, you know, kind of a general and procedural. So the sections that are relevant, two point three, six point five, zero, zero, I and two point three, six point six, zero, zero, I both point to the land and development code. And so your restrictions for R V use are within that. And so they would apply under this section. So basically you just cross reference and it will allow compliance.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Oh, and before you, before you move on, just one quick thing. So just as a side note, and it was in the consent agenda, and that's why I didn't bring it up earlier. Ordinance or resolution, whatever it is nineteen dash twenty twenty-four, this has a misspelled word in there where it says license.
We'll get that corrected.
Thank you, Mr. Spellcheck. We. Paperclip. Yep. He's. Paperclip's coming back. They're modernizing him for I, A I. Okay, we are moving into executive session. We will be staying in here. So for those folks that are here, we are going to ask you to leave the room and those that are online will. We will be coming back from executive session after, before we adjourn in case there's any action that needs to be taken. And so the, the team session will remain in limbo until we come back.
First, we have to do the motion.
Yep. So do I have a motion to move into executive session?
I'll, I'll make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, sub four, sub B, for a conference with the town attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions regarding pending matters before the Colorado Office of Attorney Regulation Council.
We need to do both of them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Separately.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Erickson?
To member Fiorito?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim King?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Make a motion to move into executive session pursuant to C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, sub four, sub A and C R S twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, sub four, sub E, concerning the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of real property and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiation, developing strategy for negotiations and instructing negotiators.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Erickson.
Mayor Pro Tim King?
Yes.
Councilmember Romanella?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimpel?
Yes.
Councilmember Abbott?
Yes.
Councilmember Chronic?
Yes.
Mary La Kind?
Yes.
Councilmember Fiorito?
Aye.
We have successfully completed our executive sessions. We have no actions to take. So do I hear a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.